We are going to move right into our work session just because the regular meeting was short and I think we can keep on going. Depending on how long the conversation is in our first monitoring report, we will take a break and then come back to the second monitoring report. We will be doing two monitoring reports this evening, starting with our Black Males Third Grade Reading Part Three Report is where we will start this evening.
Nice shirts. Just worn. My top.
Some phone books or something.
We're gonna look like a Verizon commercial.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session this evening on our monitoring reports, starting with Black Male Third Grade Reading Part Three Report. For those that are here watching and wondering what we're doing this evening, some of you are very familiar with this, but this is our time in progress monitoring, where we will have a conversation between the board and the superintendent that provides board's opportunity to evaluate the alignment between the community's visions, goals towards student outcomes and the school district's reality, current student performance and growth, some of the things that we look at before we engage in a monitoring conversation. These are four things that we look at. We ask, does it clearly show what is being monitored? Does it clearly show data for the three previous reporting periods? Does it clearly show the superintendent's evaluation or interpretation of performance relative to the goal? And does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation? We know that those things have happened. If one of those four things did not happen, we would send this report back to the interim superintendent to fix those things before we would engage in conversation this evening. Being that we know that all of these four things exist, we are now ready to start our monitoring conversation. You will hear this evening, board members asking questions, starting out in the who, what, and why. We're learning, we're not looking at future, so I know we're really good about catching ourselves if we're asking future questions, or we're really good about changing those questions, so they won't be future-related questions. So I would open it up now to my board colleagues as we work in the who, what, and why. We do have AJ and Cindy with us this evening as well, so please don't be surprised if you hear anyone that might chime in. If you hear a voice and you can't see them, that is AJ. Besides that, we're gonna continue with our conversation this evening. So I now open up to my board colleagues to start our discussion this evening.
After comparing the data on page two to our winter percentages, we saw some really great gains for our Hispanic and Latino students, almost 10 percentage points, almost eight points for our free and reduced meal students. So based on these gains, why do you think we're seeing such significant growth in our non-target areas and not necessarily the growth that we intended? And know that I celebrate the growth that occurred, I should say that first. I'm really excited to see the movement that we've made, so bravo. But I guess, why such a big increase for our non-target students?
Yeah, I can certainly start. I'm just, I'm really proud of this team and of these principals, because I'm probably gonna go way into this, so stop me if I go too far. The fall to winter/spring gains were 36.3% to 47.4% for our Black Male students. You know, that's an 11 percentage point gain, which in fast terms, you know, Mary, you can correct me if I'm technically not correct in that, that's aggressive growth as an organization. And I use that as an example because you see that in almost all student populations, as well as the all students, and that's indicative of the systemic movement, the systemic nature of our strategies, our district-level strategies, of access to high-quality curriculum instruction, of taking care of the social-emotional needs of students, supporting their safety, all of those lever aspects that we talk about. When all of those are working in tandem and in concert with one another, you begin to get system-wide movement and learning, and that's what this data is representing right now.
Well, I was just gonna, yeah, start with that, which is congratulations to the students, to the families and the teachers for all your incredible work. I think, I think these are really exciting, this is exciting movement and exciting trajectory to see. So I wanted to just make sure we also give shout-out to the kiddos and the families that are maybe listening, because it takes everyone to achieve these goals. So congratulations on that as well.
I want to capitalize on that, because that comment is significant and profound in that it takes everyone. It absolutely, it takes a belief of students and the staff that are in front of them, it takes a belief of the staff of the students in front of them, it takes 600 school leaders showing up to Wells Fargo Event Center to collectively raise an awareness and a deeper belief and understanding around the seven strategic levers that were community-developed several years ago. So those mindsets and those dispositions and the hard work, those have to precede the science of reading. And so I think that's what you're also beginning to see, is a system moving both at the head and the heart level.
Sorry, I was just wondering, we spent a lot of time celebrating and recognizing, which we should, but I think Ms. Martirano had a good question, and I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of it. So, do you want to ask it again?
I'm sorry, did I miss answering your question?
I looked at the fall data regarding kind of our desegregated information on page two, and several populations had really great gains. You know, our Black Males had five percentage points gains from fall to, excuse me, from winter to spring. Our Hispanic and Latino population had 10 percentage points. Our free and reduced meal population had eight. All students had nine. So I was curious why, it's great that we're seeing such a significant growth in those populations, but to see it in our non-target population, not see that the really wide growth in our Black Males was the question of why, why are we seeing significant growth in some areas but not in the target population?
I think, I want to make sure I'm looking at the chart that you're looking at. You're saying page two.
Yeah, forgive me, because the winter data is not represented here. I went in and looked at the gains that occurred from winter until now. So the monitoring report that we just did in February for these same kiddos, and just really great gains for some of those populations, and really there are only four populations that weren't above the target for Black Males. But yeah, really, really significant for our Hispanic and Latino population, that was the highest, at 10 percentage points gain.
If I think I understand correctly, an area for us to focus in on is for Black Males who are also multilingual learners. Is that where your question's headed? I'm not quite sure I understand.
Can I, do you mind if I jump?
Sure.
Okay. So I feel like one of the things, one of the areas that we are coming to understand as this, as we apply system-level responses, we are able to start seeing how that response maybe doesn't hit all students the same. And Black Males are not a monolith, right? Black males make, some of our Black Males have IEPs, some of our, many of our Black Males have IEPs. A large percentage of our Black Males are also multilingual, not Hispanic-Latino, right? Different languages. So being able to address those specific needs of those specific groups, we are seeing that flesh out differently, and our response to that data, because we're seeing it here, we're applying the same thing, but it's not hitting everyone the same way. So we have to look at those individual groups within Black Males and be sure that we're targeting those with specific strategies that meet the needs there. And two of the areas moving forward that we're really looking at are multilingual students as a whole, and also our students with IEPs, because those, that's another group that has historically not made the progress we've needed, so I don't know, that helps answer that. And we believe that those two areas are some of the reason why we didn't see the gains. We didn't target that from winter to spring in the way we will next year, because we were just learning some things through the strategies that we were putting in place.
Is it also possible that the gap was just that much wider, so narrowing the gap is?
Certainly, right? And we have to be more aggressive in that narrowing, and that's where those individualized strategies for those individual, I mean, individual students, but also groups of students, right? Those strategies aren't going to be the same, but we have to start the same to know that we're moving forward as a system, right? And then we're able to then say, okay, that works for this group, but we've got to add something extra. So yeah, absolutely, those two things together. But to get to close that gap, which we will, will take some targeted strategies for specific groups within that Black Male group.
I guess I'll kind of piggyback on all of this, which is like amazing growth this year, and then we look at where we want to end next year, and it's like, what additional resources do we need to have, you know, a 20-plus point growth year next year if we had a 10-point, right? I mean, that's, right? Okay, well, I tried to make it in a what. All right, I'll save it.
Yeah.
Could have asked about what strategy, what strategies are we going to, yeah.
What strategies do you see moving forward that are going to move the needle?
So, to interrupt. Madam Chair was correct in that before you get into what should happen in the future, you will not have the context to understand if that is the most wise course of action or not, before first understanding what has happened in the past and what is currently the case. And so it does not actually matter how you word the sentence. What matters is first analyze the past and the present, and then once you've spent the preponderance of your time on that, then you can leverage that wisdom to help reflect upon the administration's plans for the future.
Okay, so let me ask a current-time question that are reflecting backwards. What do you attribute this incredible growth to this year? I know you talked about everyone kind of moving in the same direction. What is, like, now you've made it all the way through the year, I know it feels like we just had this conversation about the winter data. I don't know if now that you have the spring data, you have any other reflections that you would share, or just kind of refresh and remind us, what are those top amazing things that we attribute this to?
I'll start, and you can fill in details. Efficacy first, efficacy and agency of staff, and that has everything to do with school leaders and leaders focusing in on the science of reading, and making sure that we're all pulling on the same end of that instructional rope. That's number one. The second aspect of that is teachers really digging into the professional learning, and again, that, all of those levers coalescing in the presence of students around recognizing that students come with unique challenges and circumstances, and knowing your students not only by name but by heart and by circumstance, and knowing what each of them need, so that the learning is relevant and that it's present with them, supported by the science of reading, by teaching those foundational skills. And then I guess I'll jump into some of those foundational skill blocks, right? So making sure that as an organization, that our leaders, our teachers, our instructional coaches are all focused on those foundational skills, whether that be KT or third grade, third through five, of recognizing that that time in front of students is precious, and we have to maximize that time with students and not have it interrupted with pullouts, you know, interruptions, things like that, that sometimes just take place during the school day.
I would add grade level instruction for all students. So to piggyback on what Matt said about not pulling them out, but we can also be a barrier to them having instruction even if they're not pulled out, if we're not giving them those opportunities in the classroom. So I would say the focus on grade level instruction, and the focus this year on acceleration versus remediation, and we stuck to that, and it was hard, and these leaders back here can tell you, it was hard at first, but we stuck to keep moving, stay at grade level, backfill skills as needed, but don't go back and try to remediate everybody through intervention, and it worked for us. And so that, I would say, was another key strategy and collective efficacy from the elementary group as a whole, that we became one team working towards this instead of individual schools, and then that trickled down into schools that students were setting goals in their classroom, classrooms had goals, grade levels had goals, schools had goals.
Students had goals.
Yeah, the students within that. So they all saw themselves as part of this in many of our schools, and really feel like that moved us forward.
What I saw too within the schools was just our leaders and their coaching through-line with their coaches and with their leadership teams, consistency across buildings, and then as well as consistencies within PLCs and in teaching groups. You know, in the past, we might see some teachers implementing, some not. We saw a greater increase of consistency across our buildings and within buildings, and our principals working hard with their associate principals and coaches just to ensure what specifically is happening in the classroom, and what barriers they can remove, and then what they can coach and grow from. So they did tremendous work to make sure that we, what we set out as a plan was implemented at the buildings.
Couple of questions. What impact has the financial investment in the new curriculum had? And can you speak to adoption of the curriculum in terms of fidelity? So has that played a role? That's kind of question one. And then maybe the second question is, did anything having to do with culturally responsive literature factor into any of these gains?
Yeah, so the curriculum adoption, it has a significant impact in multiple ways and in multiple levels. The first is that it creates some assurances that we are teaching grade-level, standard-based level content. Without that, without that consistency and that universal curriculum being implemented, teachers are left to their own vices to try to figure out how to get that done, and to break down and deconstruct, you know, common core standards, things like that. This curriculum allows us to ensure that we provide staff with support around a vetted universal curriculum that is standard-based, it is grade-level, and it does include culturally responsive literature in the actual content itself. And so that's, I think that was part of your other question, Ms. Norris, was how do we ensure that? And that's one of those other assurances, is that it's from Unbound Ed, it allows us to actually ensure that we are being culturally responsive to the students that are in front of us and to the families that we serve. As Unbound Ed has, that's, how would you call it? I wouldn't call it, that's their thing, that doesn't sound right, but their notoriety is around the cultural responsiveness of their curriculum.
What is the status of adoption? What percent of teachers are fully trained and implementing?
That's a good question, I don't know.
All of our teachers who are current teachers for this past year have been trained. When we were in virtual, we did a massive training, which trained teachers, support teachers, everyone, we took advantage of that time. We did, and then new teachers, we trained them. In the curriculum implementation, we continue to train our principals and our coaches to go back to work with our teachers and PLCs. So there's ongoing training for the EL curriculum that we have. And to piggyback on that, there's really two components of the EL curriculum that impact this data. One is the skills block, which is strictly around foundation, right? It's learning those foundational skills that you need to know to learn to read. The second part in that is what we call the content block, but the ELA, where you're reading texts, multiple texts, you're reading trade books, you have themes, you're writing, and that has to couple together, right? So we've, over the past couple of years, really put a strong emphasis on getting that foundation block in place and up and running with fidelity. I would say we're higher there across the board, it's been our real focus, and moving into ensuring that that content block is also being implemented with integrity, because those two things have to go together. We have to learn to read, then we need to apply that reading to something, and that's what's going to move the, continue to move these scores. One of the things that is part of our curriculum that we're noticing and seeing a relationship to moving our reading data is the amount of writing that students are doing. It's embedded into the curriculum, and then also the scaffolds that are embedded into that is helping us reach these goals. So as far as percentages, a percentage of all schools are implementing, not all at the same, they didn't all start at the same time, so they're not all at the same place, but all schools are implementing.
And what's the ideal state? By X date, it will be fully implemented? If you could just?
Our foundation block was really, at the end of this year, we wanted it, we wanted to ensure that it was implemented with integrity. I would say it is implemented with integrity. We have work to do in places, but people are working towards that in most, all, or most of our schools. And then we have some, a goal for our content block to be two years, 100% of classroom. So?
Two years from September.
Yes. And we'll, I think we'll be well beyond that.
I just had two quick questions.
Mary, can I interrupt? I'm sorry. Can I ask that participants that are not engaged in the conversation that's happening up here to keep side conversations either outside or at a minimum? It is distracting. Thank you.
I just had two quick questions, and I do want to applaud the growth, but I also want to recognize the differences that exist between last year and this year, and talk about anything that we believe with regard to growth is inherent in moving from virtual to in-person learning, and any other sort of nuanced information that really helps to better inform what we're seeing with regard to growth. I don't want to take the wind out of anyone's sails, but I think we also have to recognize where we were a year ago, and even the months preceding that versus where we are now.
I don't know that I can emphasize enough still, though, the belief and an agency and an efficacy around believing that this is the right work, and that we're doing the right things for students. I think many folks would argue that this year was tougher on staff than last year was because of the high absentee rates of staff and because of the high absentee rates of students as well, and that, I think we talked about this maybe in our last conversation a little bit, about the number of staff on average that were absent on a daily basis was anywhere from four to six unfilled vacancies every day, and staff were constantly, teachers and administrators and directors and curriculum coordinators, instructional coaches were covering classes. So all of those systems built in terms of support and providing that coaching and support and feedback to teachers in the moment and instruction and supporting students, a lot of that was really eliminated because so many folks were covering classes, and so many folks were trying to support those needs of students and families and then one another. And the reason why I'm lifting that up is because, because of that challenge, that we're all on the same boat, rowing in the same direction, the power of that, I think, is evident in some of these gains, even at a super, super tough school year.
I had just another question, and it really, thank you, Matt, for queuing this up, because it's a perfect segue relative to staff. So we've had a clearly large number of teacher exits from the district. What do we think the impact of that will be on our ability to continue with fidelity, to implement systems while at the same time, training up folks who have not been necessarily trained in who we are, what we do, and how we do it, but recognizing that we also have some pretty aggressive goals ahead of us? So it's sort of, what's ahead, what's the impact for what we're going to see for changes in teaching staff, which I think is going to be significant?
Yeah, that's a great question. In terms of quantifying that impact, you know, that's, I don't know the answer to that. The qualifying impact of that is, you hit it on the head. Our system of supports for training and onboarding, the onboarding induction process of new teachers, it's always been relevant, but it's more relevant and more significant now than it has ever, ever been, of making sure that we have the systems in place, which we do. It actually began yesterday with, again, 600 leaders coming onboard, many of them new to our staff, some of them not even on contract yet, they're showing up to be a part of that and engage in that learning. And so being able to provide those system of professional learning supports to staff in an induction, in an induction and an onboarding year-long process is what our supports are designed to do. I do know also that our school leaders are poised and ready to target their supports and instructional supports and coaching with their new staff to fast-track their learning of the curriculum and their application of that curriculum and those content blocks and skills blocks, to make sure that they have those supports in place. Teacher mentors are always, and have always been, a critical key to our success as a district, and so continuing to emphasize with our mentors and our instructional coaches the need to provide additional supports to new staff who are learning this new content, that's key for us. And so, and how do I, qualifying that, you're spot-on. That's going to be a significant, either advantage or disadvantage for us moving forward, but it will have an impact, and on our ability to fast-track that learning for new staff is going to be important for our success next year. We've got, do you happen to know off the top of your head, our professional learning calendar for the summer? I know we have it, I'm just thinking about how many folks are already enrolled or, you know, things like that.
We have various professional learning opportunities, more, not so many for new staff, because there are not, some have not been hired or weren't hired prior to their start date, but we do have things already planned for new staff to get them, not caught up, get them?
Calibrated.
Acclimated, calibrated around both our IM and our EL curriculum. We also have a plan with our coordinating. We also have a plan with our coordinating coordinator team to specifically help with new teachers. We have some schools that have more than others, but in talking with leaders, feeling that the systems we've put in place and the common curriculum, the common expectations, the common mindset is going to help when you bring new teachers in because everyone's, everyone's implementing the same thing. Everyone has been doing it. And so bringing someone new in to that grade level won't have some of the impact it would have prior to that. So I think we, but we do intentionally have some things in place to better support new teachers with the, with our, through our coaches, but also through our curriculum team.
Did you see any correlation between attendance and movement in students? Is that something that has been looked at or can speak to? Data?
I, I don't have anything in, any data in front of me that, that would speak to specific answers to that. Our research, you know, national research would, would obviously tell us that attendance is going to have a correlation. We didn't do some of the same correlations that we did with the high school data. So, but we could pull that.
And some of the differences there too is, you know, in talking with schools or even us going in, we're all teaching the same, like we're all implementing the same curriculum. We're implementing the same instructional strategies. So if a coach goes in, if I go in, if the ELL teacher or a special education teacher has to, goes in, it, you're not having quite the learning loss in a day. You're not having just come in and do busy work with a group of students. So it was easier to kind of keep up with that, with attendance.
I, I was meaning student too. But yes, staff's super important. I was wondering about student. I didn't know. There'd been any deep dive into that at all?
I just want to make sure too that we're, we're keeping our questions geared towards our black males and that we're staying focused on that as we're asking those questions. Just as I'm listening, I'm jotting down questions and, and I'll be jumping in to make sure that we're staying focused on that and that our, our questions aren't being interpreted as if we're focusing on all students because right now our conversation is being focused on our black males. And I want to make sure that we hold true to that during this conversation.
Quick question. If you look at bottom of page three, which talks about percent of blackmail first grade students meeting fast benchmark, and then you look up at page four, that's the percentage of second grade black males. Our kindergarten black males met targets. They're doing really well there. But our first and second graders, and especially when you look at our second graders, next year, they'll be our third graders, the ones that we are going to be looking at to meet the, if you look at our fall data, should be 52%. And you look at where they're ending this spring at 39.6%. Maybe this is more of a how. I guess maybe, can you tell me more about?
And if we're ready, if we're ready to move into that, because I think we've already done that already, so with, with probably one of the previous questions. So let's just go ahead and move into our future questions, knowing that we can take a step back into the who, what, and why if we need to, but let's just go ahead and move into the future.
Okay. So I'm just looking at, at those two cohorts and looking at what to project, especially the second graders into projecting them in third grade. What steps will be necessary to get us there?
So I can start, actually. So there's a couple of things. So first is, I, I want to point out that in terms of the, the second grade progress measure, as it's currently written, that was a, an 11 percentage point gain from fall to winter. And in first grade, that was a 13 percentage point. And so the reason why I'm stating that is because that, that sort of growth does show systems movement. The area of opportunity there, before I get to that part, also wanted to lift up, we, we pulled some additional data from the student success, which is the panorama system, right? That also uses our, our fast dataset. And there's, there's two indicators that we looked at, two healthy indicators, healthy indicator number four and healthy indicator number six. And for the healthy indicator number four measures the percentage of students that were on track that remained on track. So they, they were meeting benchmark and they remained on track. And what you want that to be is around 95%. And for our, our blackmail students, we were at 91%. You know, and the comparison data to that would be to Heartland would be 87% and the state of Iowa is 86%. So what that represents is that the growth in our students as they met benchmark in, in winter, they maintained that growth. And so that's a, that's a great dataset to be able to say that they, we kept that learning. We maintained that level because again, the test in the spring is not the same test in the winter. It's, it's, right, the, the skill set that we monitor and we measure is a, is a more comprehensive set. The other healthy indicator opportunity there is healthy indicator number six, which measures the, the percentage of students that you moved, right? So the students that were not meeting benchmark, but then now are meeting benchmark. We were at 22% of growth, if you will, compared to the Heartland Education, actually of 20% and state of Iowa at 19%. So that's the area that we have opportunity to grow in specifically in terms of our, our individualized action plans for students. In this case, for this report, our blackmail students around making sure that our monitoring of individual actions for supports and scaffolding for students in the moment in classrooms is going to gain some significant results for those students and for those classrooms. The other aspect that I would lift up is the, we pulled some data around the percentage of blackmail students K3 who are also multilingual learners, and it's 25%. So of, correct me if I'm my data here, Mary, I want to say it's 239 students, blackmail students are also multilingual learners. And that's a, one of the, are we getting to the future? Are we in the future-oriented part of this?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Is, so we know that we, we're actively right now looking in, to hire additional bilingual family liaisons specifically for the languages Swahili, Kunama, Arabic, and Somali. Shout out, we're looking for bilingual family liaisons for Swahili, Kunama, Arabic, and Somali. These are low incident languages that we've not always had a bilingual family liaison for, but those are the, of the students that are that 25%, that they're the languages, those are predominant languages that these students and these families speak. And so we are actively seeking staff members to help fill that role for those students and those families in these schools so that we can better serve their needs. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, the 239 is K through three, correct? Okay. Okay.
I have a question for the board members. Board members, according to the data that provided, the percent of blackmail third grade students meeting the benchmark was below target as described by your superintendent. So board members, what is your understanding of why the data is below target? And what is your understanding of what was done to try to address it that didn't work that we learned from? And what was your understanding, what was done that did work to try to address it?
From what worked, what I heard was a lot around alignment and rowing in the same direction. I heard curriculum, aligned curriculum, teachers trained. Those were two.
Grade level instruction, acceleration versus remediate, students had goals, and it ran through the whole building. Those were things that were successful.
I also heard that the multilingual, the languages coming up among the specific group of black males, it sounds like when we're identifying black males, it's, it's more than just English-speaking black males. It's multilingual black males. And it sounds, from what I'm hearing, is that that's an area that you all have seen that needs some work in and that it's going to be in future thinking, it's something that you're going to be addressing that we should see in future monitoring reports of some type of improvement once you've figured out kind of what is the thing that needs to happen for that particular group.
Absolutely. And just to add to that, that's an.
Hold on, I'm, I'm only curious about, we're, we're checking for understanding with board members, that's all.
And I also heard in the beginning that we talked about black males that were ELL as well as IEPs, that IEPs, you identified those as areas for intense focus next year.
All right. Got it. And so part of why I think your board chair pivoted the conversation to being future-facing is because I felt like she had a sense that she understood the answer to those questions. So generally speaking of, so that all of you know, is you're trying to calibrate your inquiry in the future, is if you can't answer the, imagine somebody walks up to you in a Hy-Vee and asks those three questions. You know, why is performance down? What worked, you know, to try to support it? What didn't work to try to support it? And if you can't answer those basic questions, you know, in the produce section of a Hy-Vee, then my encouragement would be keep getting clarity about what has happened to date. But once you reach a point where you have a reasonable amount of clarity about that, that's when then it makes sense to pivot to, okay, so now that I understand where we've come from, how we got here, now we're ready to have a conversation about where are we going to go next? How are we? And that'll be informed by what, what did we learn, kind of what brought us here? And so I feel like sometimes there's been some curiosity about, okay, how do we know when to pivot? I, I would encourage you to use that as a rubric for when to pivot. When we could answer, you know, that question cold, somebody runs up on us in a Hy-Vee and where's the data at? You know, what worked, what didn't work? What have, what have we tried that, you know, panned out? What have we tried that didn't pan out? And you can answer those questions, then those, that's the depth of understanding you want to have before trying to contextualize, is the administrator's response on a future, on a go-forward basis, really relevant to what we've learned in the past? And so I just wanted, your board chair pivoted and my sense was that that's probably why she pivoted, so I just wanted to highlight that for your own future application.
I have another how question. When you look at really every section with regard to individual school status, we have maybe one instance where, maybe two, 50% of our schools are meeting the target measure, but in most instances, we have large percentages that are not. How are we going to address and resolve the issues of the schools that are not meeting the target measure?
Beyond some of the, the strategies that we just talked about, because those strategies apply to those schools as well, there's also the supports of the principal supervisors and the directors of teaching and learning to continue to get into those buildings that are not meeting and provide additional intensive supports around needs that they, that they may have to help focus and help provide any clarity of misunderstandings or misconceptions around implementation that we can offer.
That feels like a lot of buildings and a lot of teachers.
Yeah, it's a, I think it's a lot of buildings with a very motivated and, and capable administration staff that's looking to move the needle with a sense of urgency.
I wish you well.
How can the board help?
I'll get back to you on that one. I'm not sure that I have an answer for that tonight. Great question though.
Keep going back to this, what feels like a very small number in the scheme of our total student population. And how, what I, what I really want to ask is how have we considered other innovative strategies or outside-of-the-box thinking to accelerate for this small group in ways other than, without, I'm not suggesting we try and change a system that is finally getting in groove, but are there any other strategies that could be considered to accelerate for this small group of students?
Yeah, I think the, the culmination of what we refer to as the lever strategies and each of those working, again, in tandem and in concert, is, is the opportunity specifically for our black males. Yes, I would argue that that, that would support all students as well too, but making sure that we have representatives in our staff that, that look like our children, continuing in those efforts, those guardrails that are in place now are key in that regard. And making sure that, that the entire system knows that we, we have to have representatives in our schools and in our, our central offices that look like our students, that's, that's going to be significant for us to move forward, to continue to elevate that and make progress in that effort. But each of these, these levers around social, emotional learning, around safety, health, and wellbeing, each of those at play with one another and not in isolation, that's our strategy.
I guess I just want to echo Ms. Norris's comments and just, you know, I was over here doing some quick, first of all, I'm a highly competitive person. I really like to win and I like strategies to win. So looking at a goal that we're hoping to reach in a year, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for us to have this like deep dive dialogue about how can we make sure that the things that we missed this year are like ready to roll? And, you know, I did some quick math right over here and we look at our second grade data and it's like, we have to move 73 black males next year from not meeting to meeting. No. Yeah, yeah, from not meeting to meeting, right? It's like, so we can do it, right? So like, what are the resources? I think we're sitting here, we all want to hit this goal, we all want to get our systems in place. And I just challenge everyone to think about if there are resources or there are opportunities that this board can be supportive of to help us, you know, move as many kiddos as we can on a trajectory towards, you know, literacy and future success. I just feel like I, I hope to hear them. And if not now, I hope to hear them later, I guess, would be my question again. I'll go back to the resources question that I had at table. If there are resources, what could they be to help us to reach that goal in one year?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm not going to, I guess, move off the mark of the growth that we're making in the course of one school year. We got to stay exactly what we're, we have to continue to do what we're doing. We have to dig deeper into our individual action plans for students at the building level and at the classroom level. I don't know that there's a, I don't know that there's a secret sauce to this, other than to pay attention to the students in front of us and make sure that we are relentless and about their success and making sure that we know them and know their families and know their, where their hearts are, what their situations are. Like that is, that is the key. Systemically, our curriculum and our instruction, and that's moving the needle, being intentional around the students in front of us and knowing who's not meeting the benchmark today and closing that learning gap today before they reach tomorrow, that's the grow to. That's the opportunity to get, we need more training, more professional development, more support from central office level to make sure that that happens in all of our classrooms. Teachers are, are working, principals are working, they're all, I know we all know that, and it's the opportunity to continue to rally around doing everything that we can for each and every child every day. That sounds like a, a general statement, but before that becomes a reality, you got to actually believe that and everybody's got to be singing from that same hymnal.
Which lever would have the greatest impact on blackmail student achievement? Can you generalize as you look at all of the levers?
I, I don't know that I could. I mean, would you say access? Is that, no.
Access to?
Access to grade-level learning and opportunities with the appropriate scaffolds and supports there. So that would be access to an instructional package for a student. So that would be access to an instructional package for a student that all aligns to hitting grade level, you know, that acceleration versus remediation. But it's not, you know, it's not as simple as just putting them in the classroom and saying, you're going to engage in this grade level. You know, there's lots of supports that have to happen there, but many of the barriers in front of us are that they didn't have the access, and so the gaps grow. We're trying to remediate or pull them out and fill in skills that they absolutely need to have, but we're doing that in place of them being at the table with the rest of their peers, getting grade-level instruction. So it really is around access and removing the barriers and providing the supports and the training to the teachers to know how to help the students access. Part of that is learning more about the science of reading, appropriate scaffolds for our multilingual learners, appropriate, the difference between modifications and accommodations for our students with IEPs. Those are all the things that keep students from having access to high-quality, meaningful, affirming instruction. And so really just building those conditions where students have a, you know, feel the efficacy that they can do it and that they're affirmed as learners. Lots of layers.
Not hearing anything else? Any more questions?
No, I just hope that what you're hearing from us is both a celebration and acknowledgement of the hard work and, I think, a competitive, feisty spirit that wants to go faster, quicker. And I just want to make sure we leave it on a super positive note with appreciation.
With a spirit of fidelity and sustainability.
All right, that will conclude our conversation on our Blackmail Third Grade Reading Part Three. We will take a 10-minute break. There is food in the next room, if you'd like to grab that, so we can prepare for our monitoring report on third grade, all reading, Part Three Report.
We've been waiting on you, too. It's been a long time.
Guess it's time to get started. It's getting quiet, so it must be time to get moving here with our next monitoring report. I'm not going to go through the spiel that I gave you the first time, I think you got it the first time, so no need to repeat myself. So we're just going to hop right into our monitoring report for third grade, all students, third grade reading, Part Three. We're going to get right into this. Board members, we're going to go with our first line of questionings of who, what, and why. If we're getting to a point, as I'm listening to you, that we're ready to move on into the how, we will go ahead and get moving in that space, but I will open up questions for this monitoring report.
Bravo, team.
Thank you.
We're very proud.
Which strategy was most effective in meeting the goal that we have met, target met? Love it on page one.
It's like it's a bit of a rinse, repeat conversation, so I hope that's okay. So again, I'll start with collective efficacy, right? And just folks having a belief in one another, a belief that this is about the work and about our kids, and knowing that if we comprehensively and systematically apply our resources towards the science of reading and making that the priority when students are there with us and we take care of those physical, mental, social needs, and recognize the uniqueness that each of them bring and the beauty that they bring to our classrooms and the richness that has, then you begin to have that student efficacy take hold around the science of reading as well. And so that's a lot to be able to say, efficacy and a comprehensive implementation of the curriculum that includes the science of reading.
In looking on pages three, bottom of page three, top of page four, that is the first grade students and second grade students, and we are below target in both of those groups. What would you, why are we below target?
Yeah, great question. The, so in kindergarten, though, the skill sets in kindergarten are isolated, discrete skills, and then when students move into first grade, as we get into first grade, those discrete skills become, they need to become integrated skills, right? And so they need to be applied in that, in that setting and in those structures. And so the level of rigor for students begins to increase dramatically in first grade of taking those isolated skills and actually applying them. That's first and foremost, like, obviously, we are seeing some gains, but we're not at the goal target yet or the progress measure target yet for their. What would you add to that team about, specifically about that?
I would say those two groups also had the most impact from COVID and the pandemic. They didn't have a full kindergarten year, kindergarten experience to build some of those discrete skills that you were speaking of, then to be able to apply them to the integrated skills they needed in first. First grade has, though, been historically an area that we need to continue to problem-solve around and get to some root cause around that shift from kindergarten to first. So we're working there. We've had several first grades across the district and schools really hit like the 70% mark, and we're really looking at what those grade levels are doing to do that, so being able to learn from that. But most overall, it's the impact, I think, that COVID had for those particular groups of students, not, but the time that we were out of school.
So I'm just curious, because you say first grade historically has been kind of a sticky wicket, if you will. Why do you think that is?
Discrete skills.
Yeah, it's the difference in the skills that they need to have from kindergarten in the first part of first grade, and then you move into the second part of first grade and have to integrate those skills together. And we need to work on that transition of taking all of those skills and now applying them to read, like reconnected, read text. And so we are, we're making that, and that's an area that we focused on, you know, in the years past and last year as well. We did sort of shift our focus a little bit this past year to third grade because that was our goal area, maybe took the foot off the gas in first grade just a little bit as far as providing that support from the team, but we have some strategies in place to really, to really work on that transition of skills and ensuring that they're getting a lot of practice in the first part of the year, but also practice in text, in that fluid reading text, so that they can apply that in the spring, because that's the change in the test that really, that one piece at the end of the year is a huge jump for our first graders, from the fall test to the spring test. And that's where, when I talked earlier to Teri's point about that, or I'm not sure who brought, but that's where we worked really hard in first grade on the foundational skills, but we've got to now talk about what's happening in the content block. But that's where the students are applying what they know to read and building their background knowledge and their vocabulary, which what helps us be fluent readers. So we've spent a lot of time in first grade in foundational skills, but we also have to work on how are you applying that in reading, writing, speaking, and listening?
What are the strengths in the 25 out of 38 schools on page one that are, are meeting the target?
One of the strengths of those 25? That's a good question. I don't know that I analyzed the data through that lens in terms of what's unique specifically about the 25. I'd actually kick it over to the team on that one, specifically, especially, you know, obviously the directors, because they have a granular, more of a granular approach to that. That's a good question.
One thing with those 25 schools would be, when Matt talked earlier about the change, right, those healthy indicators, where we're looking at schools that maintained the students that were already at benchmark and then grew more, those 25 schools would stand out as being some of the, the schools that had the highest percent of maintenance, right? You maintained the amount of students, you weren't losing and gaining, so I would say that would be one key aspect.
Another I would say is from where they started with level of implementation and where they began, and then just the direct level of implementation at the building level with IM and EL, specifically here with EL, and their supports and their scaffolds for students. We're seeing core instruction, push-in model more so than pull-out, and scaffolded supports within classrooms and buildings.
Another area would be to look at is the number of students with IEPs in third grade at individual schools. That's going to impact this, your, because as we've talked about needing to focus on that area of students with IEPs to make this goal, if you have a higher percentage, it's going to be harder for you to reach your goal. Not because the students, I want to be clarified, it's not because the students can't reach that goal. We haven't provided the support.
A system of support.
A system of support.
What, if anything, do we know about the tenure strengths or limitations of the teachers in the schools that are not meeting the target measure? Do we have any sense of whether or not in a lot of those schools, we are having the less-tenured teachers? It just feels like sometimes, even with all good intentions, if you don't have a level of experience that allows you to really navigate some of the more challenging territory, you're still going to come up short. So I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not we know anything about, you know, the staff tenure, strengths, limitations in any of the buildings where we're not meeting.
I don't know that information. It does make me think of, that's similar to your question, Teri, and that's where my mind went, Kim, with your question around these 25 schools. I started thinking through, this is a long answer to tell you, I don't have an answer to that yet.
Maybe I could have asked that in the positive, though. What do we know about the strengths and the tenure and the expertise of the teachers and the administrators in the buildings where we are meeting?
I think the strengths that we know about them is that these schools have a deeper implementation success. What I'm wondering in my head, I don't have an answer for, is the tenure of the school leader. How long has that leader been in that building? There's things like that, some data points that we can begin to look at. I don't know that they have a factor in this specifically, but it's not something that we, we have pulled up to look at, to analyze that through this lens. So that's something that we would have to look through. Anything to add to that, anything?
No, we haven't really looked at, yes, that length of service or endorsements or master's degrees related to this information.
It'd be interesting to tease out, because I do think that form follows function, and our ability to sort of have a well-established, you know, well-oiled machine is going to give you maybe a different level of result than one that's still emerging or still learning or still evolving.
Yeah, absolutely. I would add that somewhat to that point, what we're seeing in these schools that are making the goals, too, is we typically, in years past, have seen a variance among the grade level at a school, right? So you've got three first-grade teachers, there'd be a high variance sometimes among the scores of the students in that same school. We're seeing less and less of that and having, you know, that there's less variance among the grade level at a school, because they were working harder together as a team, isn't exactly what you're talking about, but I did want to, it made me think about that. And so that is something that we have looked at.
I think I know the answer to this question from our previous monitoring, but who's struggling the most?
Our system of supports is not impacting, to the greatest extent, our students who are multilingual learners and our students with IEPs. And that is due to a number of factors, all of which we're addressing for the upcoming school year, but the access opportunity there, again, students in sheltered classrooms and not in grade-level standard-based instruction, at least to the, to a greatest extent possible for those opportunities. Also, now we're going down to investments, too, a little bit, too, so making sure that we're paying attention to those access points. And really analyzing our process for identifying students for IEPs, because that generates sometimes supports that pull students out of access into that grade-level instruction. So continuing to have a heavy focus in analyzing those systems and our training and supports for staff are that, but also the training and supports for staff who are English language learning teachers and also special education teachers around the science of reading. Our system of professional learning has not always been inclusive of those specific teachers around the science of reading, and now it is. And so now that, that training and support for those staff members to develop their depth and breadth of knowledge around the science of reading is part of the overall plan. What did I miss on that? I feel like I kind of nailed that one, but I want to make sure that.
I'm not sure that I have a question here, so just bear with me as I just ramble. Because we know that students with IEPs is a, is a group of kiddos that we're struggling to connect and make sure that we're, whether it's, we just, we have some room to grow, how about that? Do we know at all with those IEPs if they are behavioral IEPs, if they are educational IEPs, and does that impact whether or not they're being pulled from the classroom so that becomes maybe access? Like, I don't know if you tease down into that with your IP data. So I don't know that there's a question there, and maybe that's just, again, more me rambling, but trying to understand if that becomes a behavior, if it becomes education, and are we seeing those kids being pulled out?
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely seeing students with IEPs be pulled out, you know, and not for not-good reasons, right? It's part of their IEP minutes, it's part of their plan, so all of those things are happening. There's also the missed instruction within the classroom setting itself when students with IEPs are with a, in some cases, with a one-on-one support staff who is not also trained in the science of reading. And so making sure that in those one-on-one support situations, that we're providing the training and the professional learning opportunities for those staff members are well, as well as to get students back into that core instruction, again, not missing that skills block or that content block, and making sure that that is, that's sacred time, that we can't have students pulled out in those moments. I don't know, I'm going to ask the question to the group and even Shelley there, I don't know that we have any data that would suggest that a student with a behavioral goal or a math or reading goal is being pulled out at any, at a higher rate in terms of misinstruction. Would, Shelley, would you confirm that for me?
I believe we looked at that data when we were developing. I believe we looked at that data when we were developing interim guardrails, and it was pretty consistent between IEP type. Okay.
Being that idea around least restrictive environment or how to best serve the student, that's the work moving forward. When we talked about what, what are we seeing and who's not being advantaged by, by what we're doing, that, that's a group, and we've got to get at some root cause and look at them as, not just as a group of students with IEPs, but as individual students, and what is it that they need, and what's that instructional package that they get throughout the day? So that's the work that we've got to do moving forward.
Who, just out of curiosity, who's we? Like, who's we looking at students? What, what does that team look like that is looking at the, you know, whatever, hundreds of students that we are working to move to hit our goals?
Great question. It's cross-departmental. So one of the things that I was going to say earlier that I, that didn't, but was that we are working more across departmentally than we ever have before. So we have a group of elementary directors that represent those departments that would look at, you know, our, our special education, our direct student services directors, and our principal supervisor, network directors, myself as the curriculum director, school improvement directors, like, we're all working together to look at that data to, to help build supports for schools. But then we also have curriculum coordinator teams that represent all of those departments as well, that meet regularly and will continue to do that even more so next year, to be able to, so they're, they're formed in networks, so they're able to look at the schools in their network, what supports they're giving them, what's that data look like, and then how do we support the school? And then, of course, we're bringing in the school leaders and the leadership teams to be able to help through professional learning, but also through just supporting the school. So they're looking at their individual school data as well.
I'd like to pivot us into our how questions and future forward questions. So anything that you have focusing on the future, future-focused questions in the how section?
So you guys talked a lot about the systems of support and talked about that, I think, Matt, you said, like, all of the factors that we need to address are going to be addressed next school year. So I'm interested in what are, like, the actual changes that are going to be made to address the areas we're lacking when it comes to the system of supports for students that need it? And, and I'm really looking for, like, are we adding more staff? Are we pivoting a focus? Are we, like, what are the tangible things, other than just like a philosophy mantra, that we're actually putting in place to make movement on that for next year?
Sure, yeah, good question. So a few of those, so in terms of adding staff, we'll start there. So those bilingual family liaisons for students and those low incident languages, we definitely, that's a, that's a growing number of languages, hiring staff in, in that respect to support student and family needs in that regard. So that's, that's an example of that. Having staff from both the central office level and at the building level focused specifically on supporting access for students who are English language learners or multilingual learners and students with IEPs to have access into that grade level curriculum, setting goals around that, individual classroom goals, fielding level goals, things like that. So that, back to the previous monitoring report question of being student-unique focused as opposed to system-focused, if you will, right? The system's important and the system's moving in the right direction, but having those student individualized action plans around learning goals, that's, that's going to move the needle for all of us, but specifically for those students. Other aspects of that, a training and support, professional learning for folks around the science of reading, including our, our teachers who are ELL teachers, our special education teachers, our support staff that work with students directly that provide those direct services. It is, that's, that's a plan for next year. Yes, they are, yes. What I missed?
Reading coaches?
Oh, reading coaches, sorry, thank you for that. Having a designated reading coach at every elementary school focused on the, the coaching of, of reading and literacy, that's a pivot that we made this year, seeing that we needed that focus in every building from one specific coach. And so I believe it's 60 hours of training over the next two years, but there's a dedication to that literacy coaching and support for teachers.
Just, they're coaching teachers only, no student, but they'll be?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, you're correct.
And Matt, in addition to actual staff, there's investments in staff. For example, Standards Institute, where we just had about 200 elementary school leaders spend a week just last week, and then there's a whole nother round of that in July. So we're going to have about 300 school-based leaders participate in a week-long intensive professional learning off-site. So while that's not more people, it's a specific targeted investment in our leaders.
Another thing I see is the intentional use of our, our allocation and specifically building leaders identifying where they need to leverage or move teachers. If we need a, a smaller class size at a certain specific grade level based on data, we're going to do that, we're a teacher there, specific interventionist, things like that. And then also just refocusing, a specific focus of interventionists and PLC leads and things like that, and really, really honing in on specific data-driven decision-making at the building level. I, I, I see that more and more over the course and, and the shifts over the year of how we're intentionally using our allocated funding and human resources, teaching resources and staffing resources to impact student outcomes.
I think we, we've worked for the previous three years on core curriculum materials that are common and moving into some curriculum materials for intervention for, to help prevent long-term ELL placement for students, so particular materials to help them, and then also in our special education classes, some particular, some specific materials to help around those students that are two or more years behind in reading.
I think during our budget discussions, there was a lot of discussion about making sure that our elementary class size stayed at 23. I think that was the number, the magic number that kept coming up. And my question is, how do we anticipate any teacher shortages moving into next year to affect that if we believe that 23 is the sweet spot and that's really what's helping us to move the needle? I just worry a little bit about that.
I'm thinking through my answer. You want to start?
I'll give a start to the team. In terms of staff hiring issues at the elementary level, which is, you know, the question on this report, we're actually not concerned about the ability to staff every classroom teacher at elementary, asterisk, but there's other positions, support positions for sure, special education positions, some intervention positions that we are concerned about. And so the support systems that Matt talks about, we're worried about the impact of those, we're less worried about the impact of classroom, the classroom teacher.
That's good to know.
That's a much better answer than I could have provided. Thank you.
Just a final question and something to be thinking about. I know in the last question, ask about how board can help. I don't know if you have a question or answer to that right now, but just be thinking about how the board can help when, you know, as we're, as you're moving forward.
Absolutely.
Just to be thinking about that.
Yeah, and, and the reason, when I say I don't have an answer tonight, I, I want to be thoughtful about that, because I know that each of your roles is highly influential and highly significant, and I, I don't want to give you the run-of-the-mill answer of, make sure our policies are, like, that's, yes, all of that's true. That's, I want to make sure that I'm providing you with an answer of substance so that it's actionable moving forward. So that's my delay in my response.
That makes sense. We're going to move into evaluating ourselves of our monitoring reports that we've done. This is something that after monitoring, we should get used to doing so that we can kind of figure out if we're ineffective approaching effective monitoring, effective monitoring, or highly effective monitoring. I don't know if you all have your papers beside you that has what lines up for those categories, but I would like to start with preparation. Where do you feel the board falls for preparation, ineffective, approaching, effective, effective monitoring, or highly effective monitoring? We agree with that. I would agree probably approaching. I own very much that I was not, I did not have questions prepared, and so I want to be very honest and open about that. I chose Juneteenth and not this work, and so I was not prepared with questions for this monitoring conversation, even though I do facilitate it, I still like to get questions to the interim superintendent, and I did not do that this time round. Looking at data and opinions, how do we feel that we fall on that one? Approaching that one is conversation includes some discussion of school system performance with reference to the data presented in the monitoring report. Approaching? Questions and statements? Approaching there, and I think to be mindful, as I take lots of notes while we're doing this, so being mindful that we're asking our questions that are targeted towards the data that we're actually looking at. I think sometimes in our black male monitoring report, we tended to shift to all students. It's very easy to do, but we have to make sure that we're indeed having a conversation about our, our black male students and getting a very understanding from the district of, what are you doing specifically for that group? And I think we could have, that's just something that, it just takes practice when we, especially we're on a night when we're talking about black males and all students, it gets easy to interchange that, I think, at times, but that's something that I, I would think too. And then also, I think the questioning, we'll definitely need to be working on that tactical versus strategical questioning. On that document that I had sent out, highly encourage that you take a look at that. Want to find a way that we can give better input to all board members about those questions. So we'll be working with coaches about taking some of the questions we've actually asked in a board meeting and see if we can create a document so you can see if that question was strategic, if it was tactical, but also giving you some input on that as well. That's just something that's going to take practice. So we're not, we're not coming off the gate asking strategical questions, but it is something that I think as we grow in this work, and we really want to start having really deep conversations during our monitoring time. Looking at past and future, how do you think we were in that area, ineffective, approaching, effective, or highly effective? Yeah. Yeah. Yep, I would definitely agree with that. I think one thing for myself is making sure that I move us into future, once I kind of see that we've asked the questions that are needed and we have a good idea of what the reality is so that we can move those conversations forward. On progress monitoring and project management, how do you think we fall into for that piece? Approaching. I'm going to take approaching on that. This is something, those were all of the questions for the evaluating our quality of monitoring. Those were questions that I'll continue to ask us after each monitoring conversation or our coaches, just to make sure that we get better at this. We're practicing, we're learning, we're growing, and so we want to make sure that we are having great conversations with our interim superintendent and then along with staff as well as we continue to move forward. I don't have anything else this evening. We're going to end there, and thank you all for your time this evening. Our work session is adjourned.